Okay, I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee to order. Will the minute taker please call the roll?
Alderman Lazara.
Mayor.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Ray Wesley. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Musson.
Here.
Declare a quorum. Next is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of August fourteenth, 2014. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next is a report and recommendation to approve an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Eulera Nelson Consulting LLC for the preparation of construction documents and contract administration for the Wooddale Clock Tower in a total amount not to exceed Ms. Henigan.
Thank you. Tonight we have for us for consideration the agreement for the construction documents portion of the contract with Eulera Nelson. This is really the next step in the process. They've done the spec drawings. You gave them direction as to which one you want them to pursue, so now this is giving them approval to do the actual construction documents, and they're also proposing to do construction administration as part of this.
Do I have any questions, phone calls?
No.
No? Okay, well then I'll make a motion to approve the contract in the not-to-exceed amount of $64,000. Do I have a second? Roll call?
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
That passes. Next items to be considered at future meetings is facade guidelines, that's in September, ornamental sign purchase in September, Potter Street easement, September, and case number fourteen dash V ten eight eighty North Wooddale Road parking lot variations in September. Is there anything else anybody would like to add? Being none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order. Roll call taker note that the same people are in attendance. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August fourteenth, 2014. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. A report and recommendation extending duration of the approved list of engineering firms to three years. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, the reason staff is bringing this forward tonight is kind of twofold. This is the first time we did a formalized SOQ request for this over a year ago. We're coming up to year two where we would go out in the fall and do requests for another list. We're kind of second guessing our initial two-year term. We think maybe a three or a four-year term is more appropriate. It does take the engineering firms quite a bit of time and money to put together these proposals, and at the same time, it takes staff time, it takes everybody's time. We have been pleased with the list right now, and also there's some firms on the list that we did over a year ago that haven't gotten work yet. So we have a lot of projects coming down the pipeline, so we kind of want to see that, you know, if there's other firms on the list now that could get a, you know, a chance to perform some work for us.
Go ahead, Art.
Yeah, I was going to say, I agree, the amount of work that we put into that and the number of companies that we went through to come up with that list, and like you said, that, I don't know, probably half the people that we have on the list haven't gotten a job from us, so it probably would take us somewhere, when you look at cycle times to give somebody a job and go through it, I'm almost thinking that maybe your suggestion of a five-year period is, actually makes more sense. I, you know, if anybody has any objections.
Yeah, you know what, we're open to anything. We brought it forward tonight for at least three, I think, four, five, more than five probably not.
Right.
Yeah, three, four, or five, we'll go with whatever you guys want to do.
I make a motion to approve a three-year extension on the contractor's, I mean, engineer list.
Second.
Second, okay. Go ahead, Pete.
Seeing that some of them we haven't used for a while, are they all still in business? They're all still up to date as far as what we have on them?
Jeff?
As far as I know, yeah, but, I mean, we could double check, but I believe they are, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, design modification to the Potter Street Stormwater Basin in an amount not to exceed $14,500. That is my motion.
Second.
Second. Questions? Mayor?
Yeah, Jeff, I know we want to clean up that pond because when it was first put in, looks like it was done on the cheap, and it looks like it. Now, there's discussion about rain gardens. Do we have time if we want to look into this? Because is this project going to get done now, right in the next month? Or what are we talking about? Because, I mean, there is a possibility about the grant money for rain gardens, so I'm just curious.
This project will not be completed right away. It needs to go through the design phase currently, and that's what we're asking for tonight, is to go to the design phase, but the design phase is going to include this dry bottom without the under drains. It has no rain garden portion of a pond, so if we want that to be a part of the ultimate design, we have to notify Baxter and Woodman and let them know what kind of scope of a pond, because right now what they're planning on designing does not have a rain garden component.
Matt, is this area advantageous to a rain garden, or is this something that we, I don't know, should we follow this pursuit? Go ahead.
I'm not a rain garden expert. I would think that there would be some way to utilize some of those, that motif in that area. It does hold a little bit of water now. I'm sure it can be designed to do whatever we would like it for it to do, but we, like I said, we just need to make sure that when we approve this contract tonight, Baxter and Woodman, who are asking to perform this due to design and construction services, they know what they're designing.
So at this point, they know they're just going to be designing a dry bottom?
Yes.
Okay. Eugene?
Who, you know, I never seen, who maintains a rain garden? I mean, I mean, this pond, I mean, it's our pond, right? So I have a couple of questions on that pond before we move forward with this pond. Did business move their drain pipe over that drains right into that pond already? There's a business over there, it's got a pipe that's going off the rain gutter right into that pond. That's illegal, in my book.
Yes, the business that's to the west of the pond dumps directly into that, and the town, the row homes to the east of the pond also drain directly into that pond.
But again, when we talked about the business, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
When we talked about that, when that building was built over there, I believe that was not part of the plan of that building to drain into our property, into our pond. Farm concerned with those townhouses, and maybe I missed the plan, the way that was designed, those townhouses should not be pumping into our pond, okay? So I don't know how that pass, but that building that was built, was built after the townhouses, and this was raised before about people dumping their pipe right into our ponds. That's not fair. That's the case, everyone could pipe it all the way to the ponds.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, I know John Forrest has had conversations with the owner of the pump building that's directly to the west of there, and he was very amicable about rerouting his pipe to outside of the pond structure. So he's willing to do that, so that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be a hurdle that we have to jump. The other one, I believe it was permitted, it was put in correctly, so we may have to do some work to move where that water's going into the pond, whether it goes back out to the ditch and then goes into the pond. I mean, most people that run their drain lines out to the storm sewer ultimately going into a pond, it's just there's a direct infiltration into the pond.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Just to follow up on where I was getting at, we put, we get rid of this pond and make this dry bottom without under drains or whatever, it's still going to be a pond, might have to cut grass, whatever. Rain gardens, I mean, I think I've showed all of you some pictures that I saw aesthetically, you know, we asked all the businesses on Potter along the tracks if we can plant trees, we're going to plant trees over there. The rain garden would look much more aesthetically pleasing over there versus just another pond that we're going to have to maintain. Either way, we're going to have to maintain it, whether it's the rain garden where the trees and shrubs are up top, or we're in a pond. Since we're not going to get the job done in the next two months, we're going to discuss these ponds, because we have a couple of other ponds we're talking about, and we might be able to get a grant, 25 percent grant from the county possibly, come this November, I think it's due November first, I think I told you, right?
Do we want to take consensus and see who wants to go with the rain garden versus the dry bottom? Go ahead, Mayor.
Again, have to ask the engineers if it would even work. I'm not the engineer that's going to tell you, yes, of course it's going to work, I don't know, but the way I've seen them laid out is where all the piping and the stone, the water filters down to the bottom.
Art?
Well, two things, I want to go back to your, they got a permit, so the townhomes got a permit to dump all their water into our pond when they build their own, and the Townhome Association takes care of theirs, but their water doesn't go to theirs, they got a permit to go into ours. I don't know if you can answer that question, you weren't here today, but somewhere somebody needs to find out that.
We'll try to look for that answer for you.
But going back to the rain garden portion, you know, I personally would like to see something better than just, you know, an open, flat bottom pond. I don't know what that answer is either, I don't have enough experience in rain gardens and haven't seen enough, but it would certainly, at least if we could have the conversation with Baxter and Woodman, just to get a little more feedback from them, bounce it back. What would it be? Would that cost the design be five grand more or ten, so we can take the flyer into design, pushing to get the grant? Is there more maintenance? To get some of those basic questions out of the way?
Right.
I don't think we can answer them up here unless we have a resident rain garden expert.
Pete, go ahead.
This was something I actually brought up about a year ago. I guess one of my questions is, we've approved this in the budget already, I'm all for doing a rain garden, but I don't want to stall this project and it's not going to get done for two, three years. I mean, right now it looks terrible, it's a place for mosquitoes to be, and we just got to do something, so again, I'm not opposed to having a rain garden possibly, but we, I just want to move on this instead of putting this on hold forever.
So Matt, if we approve this and we're saying a dry bottom, it's just going to come back to us again, is that correct? Should we proceed with this if we're even going to do the rain? I guess my question is...
If you approve this tonight, we will go to, and ultimately at council, we will go back to Baxter and Woodman, they will design this project as a dry bottom without under drains that will have no rain garden component to it. If you would like a rain garden component, we can ask them to provide us another design for, a quotation for design, that it would include the rain garden component, we'll bring that back to you at an upcoming, or upcoming committee, and we can vote on it at that time. But if you vote for this tonight and ultimately pass it at council, that pond will not have a rain garden.
Well, I don't know, I'm thinking that maybe, it seems like we're looking for a rain garden. Can I do, can I do a show of hands? I mean, what can I do to see if we want to take this off?
Yeah, number one, you have a motion.
Yeah, I mean, I made the motion.
You could withdraw the motion, or see how everybody votes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, there was a motion.
Yeah, I made, I made the motion.
Peter then.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mayor, well...
Even if this passes tonight, Matt, it's still going to be done in the spring, so whether, whether they even say a rain garden is possible there, we're not even sure, either way it's going to get done in the spring, correct?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, but, I mean, to say yes tonight and have them design it, they're probably not going to be able to design it for the amount not to exceed $14,500 if it has a rain garden component into it. I don't want to put, I don't want to put that onus on them to design us something that would come in at that price point, so I guess my, my thought would be to send it back to them, have them give us a new price. Whether, whether they come back at 14.5 or not, that's not for me to make that decision, that's for them to...
You know what, Matt, maybe we should do that, because now we know already it's going to be 14.5 for the dry. Ask, what's it cost for the what? For the rain?
I don't know.
So, go ahead, Art.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, based on everything everybody's saying, I mean, I think the goal here is to, the best solution for the issue there long-term, and what was that thing designed for before? Was it dry bottom pond, I believe, which fell in, and look what it looks like five years later. So I'm with the Alderman that wants to get this done, just I would like to look at it, and if there's some other options that are more long-term and beneficial to the community as far as maintenance and other site benefits, I think it's worth looking at even if it's a little more money.
Mike?
I'm going to make a motion to table this further outlook to see what else we can do. Not only, okay.
Well, so I'll withdraw my motion.
Does the second agree?
Yeah. Okay. And then, do we need to vote on if we need to table this, or?
You don't even need to table, just give direction.
Okay. I guess our direction would be...
Unless you want to vote, you guys want to vote for table, it doesn't matter.
You want, you want to just show of hands, who wants to proceed with the rain?
We still don't know what's coming out of it.
Okay, we're looking to see if we want to proceed with the rain garden. Go ahead, Eugene.
First of all, I don't want to move forward with this project at all until I find out the answers on the drainage, that we got an issue with the townhouses.
Right. Okay, well that's, I think that's something that we really have to look into, letting them dump their water, and go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I guess what I could do is, we'll try to answer those questions that you had about the townhome discharge, we can go back to Baxter and Woodman, get another price for that, and we can bring it as two options, what option do you want to do? We'll bring both, bring both of them to committee at the next, hopefully by the next committee.
All right, let's do that. Tony?
What's the delay time on this now, that we're going to be tabling this? How long is this going to take?
Yeah, I mean, we'll bring it back to committee on the eleventh, we can pass it at the board meeting on the second, so we're just going to be a month behind, but we'll be doing the design, we'll be doing the construction probably in the spring then.
Okay, and then also that other issue of them being allowed to dump their water in?
Yeah, we'll check on that as well.
Yeah, let's, let's really get an answer on that. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
What was it? I don't remember now, I'd have to go back and look in the file. What was the issue? Remember we asked you to find out what was being drained into that?
Motion.
That discharge part, do you remember, or was it, was it their sump pump, or was it just a street drain, or?
From who? From the townhomes?
From the townhomes.
I believe it's their sump pumps and their drains, and their gutter drains.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to table this.
No, no, it's already, they have it.
It's already done? We need a vote then? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, purchase of a fuel management system in an amount not to exceed $14,964. Oh, okay, I'm going to withdraw that one, I'm sorry, thank you. Report and recommendation, design modification, roof repairs at the north wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed $15,810.
Second.
That's my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mike, second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, purchase of fuel management system in an amount not to exceed $14,964. That is my motion, do I have a second? Art?
Yeah, Jeff, could you give me, or Matt, whoever's the most familiar with what we're doing here, the Reader's Digest version of what this thing's going to do for me?
Go ahead.
Yes, what this is, is when we go get fuel, we go to a box, you have a small key that you plug into the box, you tell it who you are, what, the mileage of the vehicle it is, because it knows what vehicle it is because of the key that you put in the box. You tell it what gas pump that you want to take the gas from, whether it's diesel, E85, regular unleaded. It tells, it releases everything that it's supposed to release, so if I take my car over there and I try to get diesel gas, it won't allow me to get diesel gas. If I take a car over there and I put in the mileage 50,000, but the last time I filled up was 35,000, and I just typed the number in wrong, it won't allow me to get gas because I'm outside of a range. What it does then, it logs all the, so at 12:54 a.m., you know, car number 409 got, you know, 17 gallons of regular gas, and this was the mileage that it was at at that point in time. So it collects all that stuff so that we can come back and say how many miles a gallon we're getting, when outside entities purchase gasoline from us, because we purchased from the fire department, fire district, District Seven, and the park district all purchased gasoline from us, then we can bill them with those. So basically, it's, it just keeps a big old spreadsheet of all the gas purchases, and we can manipulate it through our CFA.
Matt, what are we doing now?
We have this, we have a system right now. That system was purchased by OPW, which is the company that we're trying to purchase this equipment from. When OPW bought this smaller company, it decided that we make the same thing, we're not going to service product A anymore, because we have bigger and better product B, so we're not going to service it anymore, we're not going to supply parts for it. It sits outside all winter, it's, even though it's in a box, sometimes we have to go out and change circuit boards, we have to go out and change different parts of it. So it's very high maintenance, and now we can't get the parts for it. So we were told last year, or early in January, that this was all getting phased out, and we needed to move forward with a new system, so that's why we're bringing this forward to you today. It did come in slightly under budget, which we were excited about, but basically we need this to continue to be able to sell gasoline to our internal and our external customers.
Any questions? Eugene?
So, this company that's going to start merged with another company.
No, the company that, the box is, OPW sells, yeah, they've merged with another company, not the company that's doing the installation, not Accurate that's doing the installation, but the owner, the master company. So it's a Ford versus a Chevy, Ford bought Chevy.
So, okay, I understand now. My other question is, you're trying to tell me we installed it in 2005?
Matt?
Because I don't, when I was on the fire department, I don't remember...
That's, that's when we purchased that piece of equipment.
Really?
Okay. Any other questions? Tony?
Does this amount include service maintenance?
Like a yearly maintenance? No, it does not.
Do you know what that?
I don't know exactly, I know in former positions, the yearly maintenance right around two, $3,000, but sometimes it's just, you can just get it on a T and M and have them come out and fix it when they need to fix it.
Go ahead, Eugene.
If the, if the pumps go down, do they say how quick there'll be a turnaround to come out repair, that system crashed?
Matt?
Well, that would be a maintenance contract that we would probably have to sign with them if you'd want to do that, that this isn't part of the maintenance contract, this is just the purchase of the equipment.
Okay, but...
Go ahead.
So third, when we, when we do contracts like this, shouldn't we have a maintenance contract if we choose to go with it, and why come back later and add a maintenance contract? I mean, shouldn't we have it all together? I mean, I'm just trying to look at it.
Matt, what are you...
Probably we should have a maintenance contract, but I think the bigger idea right at this time is that we need to get this piece of equipment installed, we can work with Accurate Tank, we can work with AMSCO, who is actually in town here, to see if they would provide maintenance. They're OPW certified dealer as well. They did not respond to purchase or to install the equipment, but they may be willing to do a service contract with us. So we can also go out for an RFP for a service-based contract on this, on this company as well, or just go out and get T and M pricing from the, from the people as well.
Yeah, I think maybe if we can get what it would cost us to maintain this, that would be, go ahead, Art.
Yeah, Matt, do we have a maintenance contract on the prior system?
I'm not sure if we do, I don't, I don't believe that we do, I think we just do, we just call them when we need them.
So for nine years, we've functioned?
At least for the last year, we've functioned that way.
Have we heard changes?
Nine months.
I'm just saying, sometimes, I mean, every system, you don't have to spend another slide brand, some systems actually work, you know, so as long as we have a, like an override, if the electronics of it failed, that you could get gas out of it, that would be the major concern.
Go ahead, Pete.
Along the lines of what Art Woods was saying, when's the last time we had a problem with this system?
I know we had a problem this past winter, when it was so brutally cold out, we called them out, and I think they were out within a couple hours to fix it, we didn't have any problem 99 percent of the time. The amount of, amount of gasoline that we go through on a daily basis, even the police department, if you would go maybe a day without getting gas, it's probably not that, you know, chief, a day without gas, you'd probably be okay. Yeah, and we've got fleet cards, we've got emergency backup protocol set up with Thorntons and using our personal credit cards or, you know, city issued credit cards, we can go get gas if we need it.
If we move forward with this, could the new one be put in, could they put some kind of enclosure around it so it's not out in the elements? Because I know right now it is.
Yeah, I mean, there is a small box that it's in, I mean, it's not out in the snow and the rain and stuff. That wasn't part of the, the equipment, I mean, the equipment is a pedestal, a heater, a weatherproof pedestal, so I mean, it is in somewhat of a controlled environment, it's just, it's going to be outside, so even if it's got a heater in it and it's 30 below zero outside, it's not going to be 72 degrees inside there, you know, keep it nice and toasty warm.
Go ahead.
Thank you, I trust that you're going to request what's appropriate for the space and for our need, so I have to believe that you're bringing forward the appropriate housing and that sort of thing, and it just as a comment, the fuel consumption, I believe that, you know, sitting on cleaner counts, that this is good data that we might be able to use in support of our anti-idling policy to monitor the vehicles and how much fuel we're spending, so I'm looking forward to be able to see the data that comes forward. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, purchase of bulk deicing salt in a not-to-exceed amount of $113,058. That is my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Go ahead, Mike.
Matt, what is the, what's going to be the total that we buy for this year, do you know? Do you have a set goal, or? I mean, I know we're expecting, they're saying we're expecting a winter worse than last year's.
Yeah, we have recommended the purchase of 1100 tons of salt. By going through Central Salt and with this contract, 1100 is 100 percent, that's what they sell us, whether or not we want to take 100 percent of that or not, that's what we're going to buy and that's what we're going to take, I mean, ultimately. So we have about 200, 250 tons sitting in the shed right now. Last year we used over 1,300, and I think it was 1,300... Um, last year, we used over thirteen hundred, and I think it was thirteen hundred and twenty tons. So that would put us right at thirteen hundred and tw- twenty tons again, so.
I have a, this is a new company we dealing with, right? Am I right, Matt?
Yes.
You, you use a more, Morton. Is there, and the thing that scares me on this, is Morton Salt, even though it's a little higher, okay, Morton Salt, don't say we have to take one hundred percent of it. Okay? So, a- and that's what's scaring me, if we do have a mild winter, we'll be back up here talking about a salt dorm, or where are we gonna store the section of salt? Again, like we had previous years that we didn't have storage. And the other thing is, what's a turnaround with them? If we have a snowfall, it's always been whoever's in charge calls Morton Salt, and within twenty-four hours, we got trucks, or forty-eight hours, two days, we gotta turn around, coming back, refilling. What's a turnaround with this company?
Matt?
First of all, Morton Salt said that they would be on a hundred percent purchase as well this year, not like they've done it in the past. So, they were on a hundred percent. It does not say it in here, but I'm just telling you that it's a hundred percent purchase. The second part, uh, Central Salt, Morton Salt, North American Cargo, they're all, you know, large salt companies. They all basically use um, on-call trucking outfits to go get their salt and bring it to you. So, if we have uh, three inches of snow all across Chicagoland for six consecutive days, and you call them and say, "I need salt," they're gonna tell you, "We're gonna get you salt as soon as we can." You know, twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, maybe you'll get it. Sometimes it's five days, sometimes it's seven days. That's what you gotta, you gotta kind of look at your salt pile and figure that out. If you can order salt on a day like today, you're more likely to get all the salt that you want. But, when it comes to these back-to-back-to-back-to-back snow events like we were having last year, yeah, you have to plan out, because they only have so many trucks, they're going to so many places, and they only have so much material. So, yeah, you wanna try to get in early and get yours squared away. But just like last year with Morton Salt, we would call in and say, "Hey, we need seven trucks." And they said, "Well, we can give you seven trucks if you can wait seven days, or I can get you two trucks tomorrow." Because I can got four more trucks going here, and I got six going over there. So, um, you gotta manage the program, you gotta work with Central Salt, we'll work, we'll get back in touch with them right away. As soon as we can get approval at the next board, at the council meeting, we can lock in our eleven hundred. That's what we need to do first, is lock in that eleven hundred. We'll work out all the, the, the uh, other issues with them once that gets locked in. Because up until we lock in our eleven hundred with the purchase order, we don't have salt. You know, whether or not it's with Central Salt, feel more comfortable going with Morton and spending an extra thirty dollars a ton, you know, than I, than spend an extra thirty dollars a ton, that doesn't matter to me. What I need to do is lock in this salt and get the salt locked down. Eleven hundred tons doesn't sound like a lot, you know, I was at a meeting today, they were talking about five million tons of salt, you know. Eleven hundred tons isn't a lot, but it's a lot for us, you know, and I need that salt, or I'm gonna be sitting here, you know, in February, you know, listening to why the roads aren't looking good. So, we need to get this salt locked in. Whether or not we buy it from Central Salt, you guys feel more comfortable with Morton, that's up to you, but all I, I just need the salt.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, either company's probably, you know, qualified to sell salt. Eugene, you have another question?
Yeah, I have, believe me, I'm having nothing, that's fine, but my other concern is, doesn't the document have to come here for NFT funds to be used? To the council? Isn't it in the pass that the NFT funds, there's a policy that's, am I, am I, am I wrong or not? Because you got to use a lower fuel tax.
Go ahead Jeff.
Yeah, we, we have a MFT resolution or whatever, and all the paperwork, and then you get audited, you know, years from now, so, yeah, we press all the paperwork.
Well, do we have to do it at council level for this, this year? I thought we have to do it every year. So why don't we that, bring that to, at the same time for this and get it all done at once? I'm agree going forward with this, but again, there's two pieces to buy this salt. I have no problem proving salt today for you to purchase it, but we need to put both packages, the NFT fund and everything together and bring it all to us. Now, I, I've got another documents that are gonna come here in the next month or two, that we're gonna have to pass for the salt anyways. It should've been all together, and that's all I'm saying.
All right, Jeff.
Uh, yeah, I don't, it, it could be passed at the council meeting, we're not gonna pass the MFT salt resolution at the committee meeting, it just goes straight to council at any time, I mean, that's just for reimbursement.
Okay, go ahead Pete.
Is there any verbiage in this contract similar to what Morton has, that we could get extra if the winters is bad, as bad as uh-
Matt?
No, there's nothing in this, this is a hundred percent purchase. Once we get past a hundred percent, we have to go back out to the central, we have to go back to Morton, North American. Hopefully, it loosens up a little bit, and there's the salt supply. But, as you would have read in your memo, there's a lot of people out there that didn't get salt. State bid, came back, um, a lot of municipalities are looking for salt. Another reason to bring this forward, maybe a little bit quicker than the MFT, is we need to lock this in. Normally, you know, in the last year, I think it was late October, first of November, maybe, when you guys talked about salt initially. Seeing the, the outcry for salt right now, um, that's out there in Chicago and Northwest Indiana, and knowing that um, people like North American and Cargill weren't gonna be able to even tell us until late October, whether or not we were gonna be able to get anything, we just can't wait any longer, we have to do this, and we have to do it now, in order to get, to get what we need. If we have to go more than a hun- eleven hundred tons, then that's for me and Ken and I.
Let's take a vote. Roll call please.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger? Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Absolutely.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
That passes, that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings? Any, okay, and make a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Finance and Administration Committee have the rule-taker. Recall that everyone that's here for the past minute, minute minutes. They have approval of minutes for the meeting June twenty-sixth, twenty fourteen.
Some move.
Oppose?
Second?
Report and recommendation for water code update, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Report and recommendation for water code update, sections six point three zero four B, seven point two zero four, seven point three zero five B, and seven point three zero eight. That's my motion. Brad?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you can see in the background, uh, the code updates was part of the strategic plan uh, from last summer. And, and going through, we kinda all took sections that, you know, intimately applied to our, to our daily activities. And so, as going through uh, the water code, uh, specifically relating to the billing and the rate structures, these three items uh, popped out as kind of ones that were kind of uh, pain points, I guess, as you will, on a fairly regular basis, we thought those would be the ones to start with, first to clean those up. Uh, there are three of them, uh, probably be in our best interest to go through them one at a time, so we're not bouncing back and forth, and then, you know, getting conversations crossed. Um, so if it's okay with everybody, we'll start with uh, number one, uh, which is in section seven point two oh four, the shared liability of the water bill between the renter and the owner. It more has to do with truly the agreement between the owner and the tenant, and what that contract says between them. But, our language, kind of recognizing that agreement, is a little thin, and so we need to, to beef that language up a little bit, to help uh, help our, our code section uh, reflect kind of that reality between the owner and the tenant.
Do you need a motion to prove each one, uh, one at a time, or are you wanting to handle those?
Uh, I believe if the chairman would probably just get consensus on each, on each one of them, and then, um, you know, do an omnibus uh, motion at the end for all three.
All right, Alderman Woods?
What, what are we tightening up the language to say?
Mostly to recognize that there is that relationship, a strong relationship between the, the tenant and the landlord. Cause right now, we're um, how do we put this on? The, the landlords are, are becoming uh, more and more strapped with their tenants, um, not paying them, you know, rent for a number of months, um, leaving the houses trashed, um, you know, and kind of eating through their security deposits on that side. And then they're not wanting to take acknowledgement of the fact that since they still own the property, the water bill is, is part of that property, and since there's been no custodial change in ownership of the physical property, they're trying to say that it's the, 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 the tenant's bill, uh, such like uh, Nikor and ComEd, where they go after the tenants. Where with us, if it's owner-tenant, it stays with the owner.
But, it, so, are the tenants putting the water in their name, or not?
The majority of them are, and the owners are getting copies of the bill, so that they're aware as to the status of the bill.
Okay, so if the, if the renter's putting the water bill in their name, and they didn't pay the bill, you're saying the homeowner then is liable for the bill?
The owner of the property, that they're renting it from? Correct.
How is that? I don't, I don't understand that.
I mean, that's, you know, in, in uh, well, since I've been here, that's the way it's been, and then even in, in talking with legal, you know, the contract that they, that we presupposing that they're signing with the landlord, says that they're responsible for all utilities. And the water would be utilized, like I said, ComEd, Nikor, they get socials, and things like that, so they can go after, track them down, um, you know, give them a credit bureau dings, things of that nature. You know, we're a little bit different, we don't take the socials, you know, so we can't, yeah, I mean, the majority of the, the people, they do pay. Majority of the people, they do pay. Like I said, this has kind of been a pain point, um, you know, for a while, um, with, you know, certain owners and certain tenants.
So then, do we have something that the landlord would sign, ultimately saying he's responsible, even though there is that contractual agreement between the two? As a property owner, I'm looking at it and go, "Why am I gonna be punished for, for, for that guy not paying his water bill?"
Sure, um, and that, that's a function of the, the landlord getting a copy of the water bill, knowing where, like, the status of their, their tenant's payment, and payment history. Um, and we found, not surprisingly, that if they're behind us, they're behind the, the landlords and other utilities as well. So we do keep the uh, landlord apprised of their, their payment situation. When we get to a, a payment plan scenario, if they do go on a payment plan, then the landlord does have to sign off on the payment plans, acknowledging that they're liable for any monies due, once it gets to like a, a payment plan standpoint. But on the front end of the agreement, um, I'm not aware of any document that they sign on the, the front end, only when it gets uh, to a payment plan. They do get copies of the shut-off notices though, and uh, disconnection notices, things like that.
What's the, what's to stop us from doing the same thing Nikor and ComEd do with getting social security numbers and following them? You know, going after them for the bills, not, 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 like, like Alderman Woods said, not punish the, the renters. Uh, why would I wanna rent some if I'm ultimately gonna be in, have to pay for it? I mean, is there a legal standpoint that we'd have to ask, or?
Yeah, we would have to check with legal, I mean, my understanding is that the, kind of the past stance is been that we don't wanna be the custodian of, you know, thirteen thousand, or, you know, six thousand social security numbers. But, I, you know, certainly something we could entertain, if, if that's the direction uh, we wanna go.
First, it doesn't happen a lot, and now we got, well.
It, it's, it's, it's a pain point.
Right.
But.
I, I would think that there has to be a, a signed agreement or understanding then with the property owner, that he's ultimately gonna take liability for that water bill.
And yeah, and if that's uh-
That might be the point of least resistance or the path-
Sure, and it's-
-path to travel than being the keeper of six thousand social security numbers.
Sure, and, and that's part of the, the tightening of this relationship between the water bill and the owner and the tenant, is if, you know, that's the, the route that we decide to go, then, then that's great. That, that, just kind of the conversation, we need to tighten it up, and if that's the way to tighten it up, then, then that's great. If, you know, it's two sentences in the code, you know, that, that's fine too, we just need to tighten it up so, you know, everybody's aware of it on the front end.
I, Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, but, I don't know, I think this happened three, four years ago or something, couple years ago, whatever. We had a couple instances, and then we ended up leaning the property. Was that right? Is that what, that's what happened, right? Because of the way the language, we ended up leaning the property anyways, and the property owner was liable.
Correct, correct, and, and um, that's, those two instances is what led to the changes in the payment plan language, where the landlord has to sign off on the payment plans. Don't wanna get into the whole situation, but there's a little case law involved in that, where the, the homeowner was trying to exercise their rights, and we gave the tenant a break that the landlord didn't like, and it kinda got, got interesting from there. So, yeah, we ultimately did wind up leaning the property, and the, the landlord uh, did wind up paying that. That's what changed the, the payment plan language though, so, might be a good idea to, like you said, to do that on the front end.
Right, I mean, cause you're extending a service to somebody guaranteed by somebody else, but not acknowledge that they're guaranteeing. So you got two people on the contract, so to speak, here.
Sure.
But, you know, nobody's really signing a contract, and, and the property owner, at the end of the day, is gonna get stung in this case.
Current, uh, with the, way the code is written currently, I mean, what happens if neither one wants to pay? Will we lean the property, or have we ever had that?
Yeah, we lean it or shut it off? Or shut it off, then lean it?
Any other questions?
I, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what, what we trying, are, are we trying to rewrite this thing, or, or give your opinion to go back and tweak this thing more, and then bring it back to us? I'm, I'm hearing concerns here, and you saying we gotta go back and tweak it with the legal. I mean, where are we going with this? What is our purpose tonight for this? Are we giving directions, go back to attorney and, and retweak this whole? Bill, you know, or, or what, what are we trying to accomplish here? I, I just totally a little confused here.
Um, you actually pretty much right on point. Um, we're looking for comments, and, you know, how, for this shared liability, how the council thinks it should be addressed going forward, so that we can then go back to legal and have them draft the appropriate ordinances to button it up. You know, I think the, the contract uh, language on the front end of it, uh, sounds like a great i- idea to me, and I think that would probably resolve a lot of the, the issues, you know, on the back end of it for us. And so, yeah, we're trying to get uh, some buy-in and, and comments on the different topics, to, to make the, make the situation, the, the code better, and, and kind of flesh it out.
We're talking about some single-family homes, right? Multi-dwellings, six flats, or?
Everything. Everything.
So it's gonna be different between a, a, an owner that has an apartment building, and an owner that has just one, one home? It's gonna be different ordinance or?
Yeah, um, I know these are extremes, um, but, you know, a single-family home that you're renting out to somebody else, you would have that contract. But we're, really, it's be per one meter, like someplace like Dominion, where we're not gonna have all, you know, fifteen floors or whatever of Dominion, sign with these, cause there's one meter in Dominion. So, it's really more on the uh, the single-family, or maybe like the two flats at, at most. Once you get much past that, they're, you're businesses, or next to like Dominion Towers that, that own themself. It's, it's really more effective on the single-family, or maybe the, the two flats.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, uh, Brad, two things come to mind. One, for ease, if we did the, just notice the owner that he signed, that he would be liable, you could do that to all people who are signed up under the rental program as part of the rental licensing, that would, you know, make that a pretty quick change. That would, you know, make that a pretty quick change. But, so then does this also hold true for commercial properties? So somebody that owns and rents, you know, two hundred thousand square feet to a company that's using a hundred thousand gallons a day? That guy leaves, the, the guy that owns the buildings liable for the water?
In theory, yes. But most of the, and, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, the, the code doesn't delineate between residential or business-type activities at this time.
So as a business, just, do, at least as from a business standpoint, should we not get relevant or pertinent information to, to go after that person for the water bill? I mean, because those are going to be more substantial. I mean,
Sure.
I'll complain about the residential one, but you know, you can get over three hundred, five hundred or a thousand dollars. I mean, those commercial water bills can be, you know, five figures easy.
Oh, sure. And kind of, uh, uh, a takeoff of the rental housing packet? You know, that could be something that we could include in the, like the business license application. Because those go to the, the property owners and the business owners, and then we can, can work back and forth that way.
Right.
Thank you.
With those.
What, what do other communities do right now with this?
Majority of them, well, I don't want to say the majority of them. The few that I've talked to, some of the ones immediately around us, some of the bigger ones around us are home rule, so they can have transfer stamps, so they get the bill paid at closing. Some other towns, they do go after the people pretty aggressively through a collection agency, something like that. And then one of them that I talked to kind of does the same thing we do, that if, you know, they hold the owner's feet to the fire and if nobody shows up, then they, they shut it off.
You just said they go after, a col- a collection agency goes after, who's that collection agency going after in other towns? The owner or the renter?
Uh, the renter.
If they're going after the renter because the renter's being held liable, in our case, they'd be going after the owner under what we're talking about, right?
Correct.
If in fact you employed a collection agency.
Which we don't, but correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, but initially we go after the renter. Once the renter's not paying up, that's when we put the lien, right? That's what happened in those couple of cases, if I remember right.
Correct. Yeah, we don't, it's not, the very next day, we give the renter the, the appropriate twenty-one days to pay the bill. And then we send him a past due notice on that. So it's, you know, we do give the renter some time to, to, to come clean kind of before we, we go after the, the owner, so.
Okay, scenario, so the, what happens if the renter doesn't pay the water bill? Liability transfers to the owner of the building, but the renter's still in because he has to evict him, right? He's not out yet. So does he have to continue water service or he just doesn't pay the bill and shuts off the water? He doesn't have the legal right to shut the water off on his tenant.
Correct.
And a tenant landlord relationship.
Correct.
So that transfer of power creates now some more issues.
Correct.
And, and that scenario that you just pointed out, that the tenant just says, you know what, I'm going to bail in two months anyways. The bill's in the, you know, like you said landlord, landlord law, owner-tenant law. Since the bill is in the tenant's name, the landlord has no authority or power to shut the water off, even though they know exactly what's going on. And so, yeah, when they bail, presumably they've eaten through their security deposit, everything, and then they're stuck with that too. You are correct. Under our current scenario.
Peter?
I, I guess prior to today, have we talked to our city attorney about this, of what the best thing to do here is?
They generically said that we need to tighten up the language and see how the eight of you would like us to go about tightening that up and how we should proceed forward. So, so they, they, they agree that it should be tightened up, but they needed to get buy-in and commentary from, from the council for how you want staff to, to implement and, and impose the, the rules of the code.
Obviously, you hear a lot of really tighten this thing up, so I mean, I hope city manager's got everything typed down that was transaction here for tightening this up because you guys got some work to do on this. I don't care how you look at it, it's some work.
Brad, is there any state recommendations on how to, on, go about, because, I mean, it just sounds like we're punishing the owners of the building. Is there anything that the state recommends? In other words, if, I mean, I, everything I was saying makes so much sense and it would make you almost not want to rent here. Is there anything that's, like I had, anything the state recommends?
I did, so, part of it, could we, even if you didn't want to do the social security numbers, could they, as with all their other utilities, post a, you know, bond or cash, uh, security deposit?
They do, alright.
You know, for the water?
Yeah, every account, every account that gets opened in the city has a fifty-dollar deposit on their account. So that obviously, you know, gets netted out against their final bill. However, in the, the scenario you presented, the bill's going to be significantly over fifty dollars. Yeah, I know a few towns, and I, I didn't write them down, it's been over the years, just, you know, anecdotal conversations. You know, some towns do have different rates for owner deposits, like if you're just owning your home, and rental deposits to help hedge against some of this on the way out.
Almost suggests that that might be a good idea, that that number be two fifty or something.
Yeah, that is, uh, that is in play in, in a few cases that I'm aware of. They do have, uh, different rate, there are different deposit amounts for just if you're owning the domicile or renting the, the property.
Because I know a complex is even that, the utilities and, and they take a deposit on all those. The gas, they got third-party providers of, of gas, electric and water. And you, you put a separate deposit on each, each one of those items in the complex. They're like a hundred and fifty bucks a piece, so.
Yeah, and, and the, the fifty dollars right now, between the garbage and the two flat fees is around twenty-eight, twenty-nine dollars. That's before you use a drop of water. And so if you use two thousand gallons of water, there's your fifty dollars right there.
Right.
The city, the city knows before the person rents that unit, how many people are going to be there, correct? I mean, is there a way you could find out what the average might be and rate go, like you said, accordingly? Or you do the hundred, a hundred, two hundred, two fifty, if there's five people in that, going to be in that household, will you renting?
I mean, unless the building department has some intel on that, we just get a name and a move-in date.
Does the city run credit checks on renters? So if they have a good credit, so why should we penalize them as far as?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the credit check would be a function of the owner renting to their tenant to make sure that they seem like a viable tenant.
And if they sign up for the water bill, then we're going to impose a, a bond. Wouldn't that be a wise thing to do, run a credit check on them?
But then we're in the business of collecting social security numbers and paying for credit checks, so.
Right. And the gas company and the electric company, they don't care if you have good credit or bad credit. They, they want a deposit.
Okay.
If, if you're moving to a new building.
Peter?
With all this ambiguity here, I, I personally would like to table this and get some more information from our attorney. I mean, it seems like we're going in circles here and we don't have enough information and we're not really getting answers to our questions. And I think makes everybody comfortable, so I make a motion to table.
We got two other items.
Table what? There's items on there.
No, we're going to do one motion at the end.
Yeah, I was going to say that, um, you know, when we get to the end, we just exclude seven point two oh four from any motion at the end and then come back at a future meeting with, with, uh, some different, different talking points based upon the information we've gotten here tonight.
Why don't we just make a motion on each one of them?
Okay.
I, why, why don't we, why are we going to make one big motion? Why don't we just get the motion table this one? More information, and well, item number two, we'll make another motion for that.
I would agree with that, that's.
So you made a motion?
I mean, does it have to be a motion? I mean, really, this is a discussion topic, so we kind of gave them direction, so all the concerns that we brought up, they can vet with the attorney and hopefully come up with a viable solution to the problem.
I don't think table.
So the tabling's off the table?
Nobody seconded.
Nobody seconded.
Okay, the second item is the, the, the senior discount. This was, you know, implemented in ninety-one, ninety-two. It went unchanged until two thousand and eleven, when it went from five dollars to ten dollars. And then in two thousand and fourteen, it went from ten to twenty dollars. I know later, this year, we're going to be having a more holistic conversation about water rates. And one of the things that, that kind of jumped out and kind of looking at the history of this discount was that it, you know, the five dollars back in ninety-two covered a certain amount of water. Then the ten dollars in two thousand and eleven covered a different amount of water. And, you know, right now, the twenty dollars covers two thousand two hundred and ninety-six gallons. You know, so once then, when the rates go up, whenever, you know, the DuPage Water Commission, that's going to be part of the conversation. I think the rates are going up seventy-two cents again January first from the Water Commission. That twenty dollars will then cover, you know, somewhere, you know, just, just north of two thousand gallons then. So the, the question is, do you want there to be some currency in the discount relative to the water rates? Do you want it to cover the same amount of water each year as the rates adjust? Or do we just say it's twenty dollars? It's fine, let it go for three or four years, then change it again. Doesn't matter, you know, on this side of the table too much. Just want to know if to try to keep it lockstep with the rates and index it to the rates, or just leave it and revisit it every year and, and go at it that way.
I, I rarely leave it at twenty dollars right now, and, and we'll revisit it every year. Because you know what? I'm sorry, I mean, I'm not, don't take this personal. I'm not against seniors, okay? Because I know the people come knocking at my door. I'm just saying is they, they also get social security raises too, okay? In some shape. So I'm just saying how much, you know, I had this conversation about these low-income houses that people came in for now. We didn't address that issue. All we kept talking about is seniors, seniors. There's people in my ward that's barely making it right now. And they're in the same boat, and we don't give them the discount. We only give them the five. We don't give them the twenty. We only give them like the five. So they have to meet the criteria, but they don't get the twenty, twenty, because we only allow the twenty for seniors, right?
It's, uh.
So think of that, guys.
You know, I think Eugene made a good point. I, I think the twenty is something that we should continue to give the, uh, the seniors, but I, I think that we probably should prorate it. I don't know how much more that would actually be as far as, you know, actual dollars. But, you know, the other issue is that we should have a program that helps not just the seniors, but I think everyone in the town. So I think that probably would be a, a future discussion. And maybe something to put on, you know, a future meeting. But we really should have a program that helps the entire town.
Yeah, we, we took a run at the general hardship discount about a year ago, and the attorney found it to be not, basically not legal. So it didn't go anywhere due to legal's opinion on it.
Christine?
Thank you. It, I'm in favor of having the senior discount keep pace with the increases in the water rates. Otherwise, it essentially becomes meaningless years down the road and it, it, it would be much less of a discount than would be meaningful for, for someone that so very needs it. So it, I definitely believe that we need to change the, the wording in this. And, and not to mention that, um, the increase in water, we are bringing in more money when that comes in. So it, it, it makes sense to keep it across the board. Thank you.
The senior discount that everybody keeps saying isn't to all seniors, just so everybody understands. It's only three percent of those, of the water bills that we collect from, correct, Brad? About three percent, if I remember my numbers right?
It's a little over three now, but yeah, it's, it's.
And the raises the last couple of years have been strictly City of Chicago and the Page Water Commission. We haven't raised, I think, now two years. And there's a discussion coming up because this January, we're getting that seventy-two cent raise no matter what. And we're going to have to, basically, we're going to have to discuss because we've got treatment plant that we've got to pay for, which we're collecting enough money right now, and we're going to have to prioritize projects. To start giving more money away just to three percent of the people and tell the other ninety-seven percent, we're sorry. Want to make sure that it's fair for everybody. And those discussions will be coming up hopefully November or something, December, before that January, or whenever, October, November. Before that, we have to pass that next increase. We're going to get seventy-two cent, no matter what, that's coming. And supposedly, that's the last one from the Page Water Commission and City of Chicago. If you want to believe the City of Chicago.
That's what we, we had talked about before, Brad, prorating it for the next three years, leaving it at a certain, certain rate. No, for three years. Peter?
Kind of on the lines, the mayor was just saying, what are the qualifications to get it currently? I know it's not just age, so exactly what qualifications do they have to meet to get the discount now?
Sure. There is a, an age classification. There's a disabled classification. There is a widower with dependent children qualification. Uh, sorry, widow slash widower with dependent children qualification. And there's a military qualification. So you have to fit in one of those four silos first. And then there's income thresholds set by HUD, very low income standards, that are very similar to, to some of the Section Eight and poverty level standards that they come out with. And then there's different tiers for a single person and then homes with two or more people. And so they have to first fit in one of those four silos, then fall into the, the income brackets as well.
Follow?
Just along those lines, I mean, what is the, what are you asking for, for proof of income? I mean, are we, you had said, we're not, we're collecting social security numbers, but how do you know how much money a person makes if we have no information on them?
That form, it's one of the rare times where we do collect some information. Probably ninety-eight percent of the ones that we collect are based on W twos, or ten forties, sorry, ten forties. Prior year, ten forty. And/or a, a social security statement, an SSA statement.
Mr. Woods?
Two questions. Two people, presumably seniors, living in a home, two thousand gallons a month, three thousand gallons a month, is an average?
The, the national average is trending a little bit below three thousand gallons per month per person for a, hate to say a normal person, but just kind of nationwide. It's trending a little bit lower now with all the water-saving features in the homes. But we, yeah, kind of conversationally see the, the senior accounts having lower consumption than that somewhere in the two thousand, twenty-five hundred range. If there's two, they're. in the two thousand, twenty-five hundred range, if there's two, they're.
Right, I thought your, the numbers you were quoting were like twenty-five or twenty-seven hundred.
Twenty-five, twenty-seven, yeah, for for two, yeah.
I'd be for making that the benchmark, to be more consistent, so that they didn't lose the money, so make it twenty-five hundred gallons. And then the rate kicks in, so if if twenty's buying you twenty-five hundred, just make it so then, no matter if the rates go up, they get the first twenty-five hundred gallons per month are free, if they use five thousand gallons, they obviously pay the the rate, that would solve what what you're talking about, and then we don't have to come back every year and argue, if it's three percent of how many bills, six thousand bills, it's a hundred and eighty households, five hundred gallons that we're talking about are fifty cents a gallon, and, I mean, that number's like eighteen hundred dollars we're talking about, I think, right? Correct me.
The the difference between, if you benchmark it at twenty-five hundred gallons, it would, at the current rates, go to twenty-one seventy-eight. So a dollar seventy-eight.
Yeah, times one eighty houses. So, I mean, that's, that's what we're, that's what we're arguing over, I mean, I think for somebody that's based on the criteria we're putting up there, the age, the wages, and stuff that we look in, and you're actually checking, you know, we've proven then, in that case, there's an actual need, if they hit that number, you know, that that HUD puts out, they're barely getting by. So I I would be in favor of making it whatever we agreed to, twenty-five hundred or twenty-seven hundred gallons, and keep that as the benchmark as opposed to a dollar a month.
Anything else?
Just wanna get consensus on that section of the code, if if everybody, so we can draw up the appropriate ordinance for that. I think that, and then I I dare ask this, that's the water side, the garbage side has been five dollars since nineteen ninety-two? If there's any interest in adjusting that? I don't have a horse, I don't have a horse in the race, I'm just asking.
Right, I I think we keep the garbage the same, I mean, the the gain is gonna be on the water, so when water goes up seventy-five, I mean, their bill really doesn't go up at all, so at some point, that keeps raising. Otherwise, we've gotta keep coming back here every year and discussing, you know, we're gonna raise it to five and a quarter, and then we'll raise it to five fifty?
Frank.
If if we figure inflation on that five dollars, what would it be? Do you know? From ninety-two to now? Then what are we talking, a dollar?
Probably about a dollar, yeah, I didn't run the deflator on that, but that, and looking at some other numbers over time on the water side, probably give it a dollar, between, I'd say between ninety-five and a dollar five, cause there were a few years where it went back down, so.
I say give them the dollar. I mean, that would be the fair thing.
Christine.
Now, Mr. Wilson, can you refresh my memory, how much, does it cost per household for average pickup? Roughly, it doesn't have to be exact.
It's around twenty-three dollars? Well, it's twenty-four dollars.
Okay, so twenty-fourish, twenty-five, and like, the intent of it in nineteen ninety-two, do we know roughly how much it was?
Uh, it was, I think it was between ten and twelve dollars.
Okay, so so they were aiming to go half, probably, to offset about fifty percent of it?
You know, I I just have the code section, the memos that went along with it don't exist at this point, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Woods?
So not to make it more complicated, but of the three percent of the six thousand, the one hundred and eighty, how many of those are rental properties? Where the garbage is not a city product? That's an, and how do you deal with that?
The ones that are rentals that don't have the garbage, or there are certain carve-outs in town that the garbage is a function of their association, such as Orchard Lakes, they just don't get the five dollars, cause the code specifically states it's for the refuse service, the garbage service, so they'll get the twenty for water, they'll get the twenty for water, and then nothing on the the garbage side.
Any other questions? Mayor? I heard a lot of different things here. One, give the increase, one, stay with twenty-two hundred gallons or twenty-one seventy-eight? You wanna raise it to twenty-five hundred gallons?
Twenty-five is what Jeff and I both had written down.
Okay, cause, well, you said it was twenty-one seventy-eight. He said, we'll keep it the same, whatever, twenty-five hundred, twenty-four hundred, so what is it? I mean, is there a motion, there's still no motion on the floor?
The dollar, the discount.
Twenty-five hundred gallons would be twenty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. So it would increase a dollar and seventy-eight cents. The twenty-one seventy-eight was the the monetary value attached to the twenty-five hundred gallons of water.
Okay. So we're gonna base it off twenty-five hundred? Whatever it is, whenever the price, the rate is, first twenty-five hundred gallons are free. Correct.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Gotta change, just gonna change the code.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Question. I thought we were taking, we weren't taking all, I thought we were gonna make one big motion now.
No.
We're making one motion here, one motion there, I mean.
No, we changed that because, we changed that.
Because you tabled the other one, basically, took it off.
So you can't do an omnibus vote for all of them if you table that one.
I only heard one aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Do it again. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One opposed? Most curious?
Mr. Woods?
So, on the same thing, what are we doing with the garbage portion?
What, Mermus?
Since the the garbage portion is a little bit different than the gallon usage, obviously, and I like that idea, the intent is to keep it, for those of you that use like Excel, you don't wanna plug in the numbers, you wanna do formulas, so we wanna have some type of formulas, we're not coming back, you're bugging you every single year. So if the original intent was about half off garbage, maybe we just make, as our garbage costs increase, you keep it half off for the discount.
I make that motion.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute.
So what are we doing with the low-income families that can't afford, within situations with the garbage? How we do those? I mean, we're just giving everything to everyone else, but, I mean, what about those people out there that I mean, times struggle, are we, and I don't want anyone to think they're against seniors here, but you know what, you gotta think of the whole entire city here. Okay, so what do you do with the people that can't even afford a garbage pickup now, and and why don't they get the discount? It's not fair that even though only three percent get it, like Art says, well, there might be more out there that need it, and we don't think of that, we only think of those people. I, I'm not against the seniors, but let's make it across the board, guys. I just don't want the people to knock at my door saying I'm against the seniors, I'm not.
Mayor? Right now, it's five dollars, the intent maybe back in ninety-two was half, but now we go from five dollars to twelve dollars, correct? That's half, or twelve and a half, whatever it is.
Whatever half is.
Cause right now, it's really only twenty percent.
If you wanna give out your address.
Is that the mo, was that the motion? Half?
I've been that route already, but it's across the board, guys.
Woods?
I was just gonna say that, right now, we're talking about seniors, and we could certainly bring up your thing at another time, and it's a valid.
But he's drawing the, he's drawing the Dachlins up, getting our, we're gonna have to pay the attorneys for all the ordinance, those seniors, well, would you mind if I loop it all in, cause I'm gonna pay more for attorney to draw different paperwork up if we don't loop it all together.
Speaking on the hardships, when we talked about the hardships, some people were out of work. Then they get a job, who's gonna keep track? That was, that was part of the problem, who's gonna keep track, how's the staff? You're gonna have the resident come in every week and, or call the unemployment office and see if they got a job? That was the reason that, I believe, was the real reason we stayed away from that one, because that would be a logistic nightmare that you don't even have enough staff to take care of that kinda deal. If I must, my memory's certainly right.
Yeah, that was half of it, the other half was legal said we couldn't do it. So that was actually probably ninety percent of it was the attorney's office said we could not implement such a program.
Frank?
Thank you, Mike. Again, I think it goes back to where we need to look at a program that we can help the entire city supplement these costs, not, like you said, not just seniors, not just vets, everyone. And I think that's something that we really need to to discuss and discuss soon, is how we can come up with a plan to help subsidize anyone that lives in the City of Wooddale, we can help them pay their water bill, we can help them pay their garbage bills. You know, we keep, we we can sit up here and come up with all kinds of great ordinances, but if we don't come up with a plan that can actually help our residents, then then we're up here for nothing. And I think we really do have to get on the ball with this. So, you know, items for future meetings is we really do need to put this on there and talk about some kind of a plan on how we can help the entire residents.
Mayor? If my math is right, with these new guidelines, it's probably gonna cost the city around forty-five thousand a year right now. I just don't want, you know, we make these decisions, I know we're helping three percent of the people, but, you know, we also had Dial-A-Ride came up a few years ago, that basically costs us thirty-five thousand a year. And what's that, a couple hundred people, that helps or whatever, deal with that one. I just wanna make sure, you know, don't overstep, and then all of a sudden, you gotta cut everything back, oh, wait, wait, we can't do that, we can't do that. Gotta think this through.
Jeff?
Yeah, but what we're trying to get across to you is you've already made the decision, all we're doing is saving you time next year, two years, five years, we're just keeping the formula the same, so you've made the decision, you just haven't updated it since nineteen ninety, so you've actually been unfair to the residents for twenty years from the original intent.
No, no, I understand that. But, you know, right now, it's about forty to forty-five thousand, and this number will just get larger. Future councils are gonna have to, you know. Yeah, just wanna make sure we do this correctly.
The idea is to have the percentages stay the same.
Right, so you're basically saying you get twenty-five hundred gallons for free, that makes sense, I mean, whatever, twenty-one seventy-eight, if, so no matter what, they're always gonna get that twenty-five hundred gallons. Woods?
Yeah.
Of the forty, since you're doing the math, of the forty-five thousand, what's the incremental difference, the change that we just made? Cause we've already committed.
About thirty, about thirty thousand, thirty-two thousand, somewhere in there, correct, Brad?
Is that?
Cause the water allowance, like, twenty-five, twenty-four?
Yeah, the the water's already twenty-four to twenty-eight, so the water side, that dollar seventy-eight, that's not, tonight, the the bulk of that number tonight will be the garbage, cause it's going from five to, so you're looking at about a seven-dollar change.
Every five dollars, about six grand.
Yeah.
So every five dollars, about six, so it's.
So it's, I think.
Plus a little extra on the water, a buck seventy-eight, so it's around forty thousand, I'm I'm gonna guess.
In in aggregate discounts, total, yeah, so I think right now, we're at about twenty to thirty thousand in aggregate.
So we're somewhere around incremental differences nine, eleven to nine to eleven thousand?
Correct, that's, yeah, pretty close. No, yeah, manager and I were talking, you know, just to keep in perspective, the 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 garbage bills in aggregate total a little over a million dollars a year for the entire city, and we're changing it about six or seven thousand, and the water fund right now brings in a little over five million in revenues, and we're changing that, you know, a few thousand again, so. Correct, correct, I mean, that's the the current revenue, correct.
Anything else?
Uh, just, it was there, are we? We need a consensus on the garbage.
I wanna make sure anybody else had anything else.
What's the, what's the, what's the motion on the floor?
I don't think. The fifty's the motion on the floor. To make it fifty percent, that's the motion on the floor.
Discount fifty percent of the then.
And the garbage.
Of the, of the rate, correct.
Do we, did, do we have a motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll second it, whatever it is.
Wait, is that, that's all together, right? You had originally made a motion.
Right, and that passed, the the water portion, so now we're doing the garbage.
We're doing the garbage, right?
Saying the garbage will be fifty percent.
Right, fifty percent.
Of the then-going rate. Correct.
Frank?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What? One opposed? Passes.
Peter?
I guess I just had one question, on the, on the first item, I wanted to table it and to get more information, but we said we're not voting on this, we're just giving recommendations, so I'm not quite sure why.
Right, the first one, we didn't have a solution to vote on, so we gave staff direction to come back with some solutions. That was the difference with the first one.
Mr. Wilson?
And the last one is the section relating to the cost of new water meters. So when when somebody adds a new service, a new service line, be it an irrigation meter, there's a new building in town, or you do enough remodeling where your your water uses, the pressure has to go up in your house, you go from, you know, a thousand square feet to four thousand square feet, and you have to upgrade the service, you have to come in and buy a new meter through the city, and then we go and install it. In looking through this part of the code, every single number in the table in the city, current city code is incorrect relative to our current pricing. In addition to that, there's no markup, administrative markup on there, cause it takes the building department time to prepare the documents, review, plan reviews, it takes the water department time to process and get the meter, it takes the finance department time to add the meter into the system, things of that nature. So in the, in the memo, the proposal is to eliminate the table that's in section seven point three oh five B, and replace it with language somewhere in the nature of the cost of the meter and associated administrative processing shall be determined at the time the meter is purchased, plus ten percent, so it'd be the brass base, the Orion reading device, and whatever that number comes up to at the time the meter's being purchased, plus ten percent for.
I'll make that motion.
Paper time.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Great.
My question.
Well, you can always ask questions after, too, go ahead.
So you wanna, I have an issue with eliminating the chart, and so, then anybody building, since I build, you know, if I can go anywhere and I know that that water meter's two fifty, five hundred, really doesn't matter, just as long as I know and can put the cost in the pile and pass the cost on to the end user. But this word, nobody's gonna know until they come in and say, okay, I'm gonna use a meter, and it's probably gonna be one-inch meter, what do you think it'll cost? And I'm not pulling the permit yet. So by the time I actually get the meter, it'll be six months from now, or maybe a year. How do we, how do we do that? I have some issue.
Right, Brad?
Sure. You know, in discussing with Mr. York, whose department purchases the meters, you know, we we loosely agreed to, you know, at a minimum, quarterly, refreshing the pricing, and then providing that to the building department, so anybody that comes in and asks or calls in, they're looking to build in town or whatever, they would have the pricing. So anybody that comes in and asks or calls in, they're looking to build in town or whatever, they would have the pricing at that time and point. We've looked back over some of the, the pricing, a few different sheets from the last couple of years through audits, and the prices have only changed a few dollars here or there over the years. The, the bigger problem is the table that's in there now is from two thousand and one, and so they're.
So can't we just upgrade the table with the new costs added in and whatever markup and, and even have a little more so that that, that price will carry through? If you look at the history of it, those meters have, whatever, changed in price twenty dollars. So add twenty bucks to it so you know that price is good for a year. Because it can't be any easier for, people call up, staff's got to look it up and go, what is it? And double check and then Matt's got to make sure that he upgrades it every six months. I mean, that sounds like a lot of things, moving pieces.
The, the concern as it was with the senior discount was just the currency of the information and not wanting to have to pay, to have the attorney drop any ordinance every year, every two years to update the table. But at the same time, I mean, it's a pretty formulaic ordinance, just update that table. So if, you know, we can also agree once a year, once every two years, we just refresh the numbers.
If you build in that perceived increase over two years, I mean, you're good for two years. And then every two years you just go, okay, meters are now ten percent more or five percent more.
Again, I mean, if that's the, the world of the council.
I think that's the better way to go. We got a motion in a second.
Basically, I was going to say the same thing. If the meters are whatever, a hundred dollars and you add twenty or thirty bucks and then plus the ten percent, they go online, at least whoever's coming to town, they know what exactly to expect. And if you update it, I don't know, once a year, twice a year, at least you update the website. Have some kind of price out there.
Yeah, I mean, if that's a more amicable resolution, notwithstanding the motion on the floor.
What was the motion exactly?
The motion was to approve to eliminate the.
The table.
The table and just go to.
Current pricing plus ten percent.
Current pricing plus markup, ten percent.
All right, well, you can add another motion and make sure you update the website with the pricing.
Can I plead to the motion or to amend the motion?
Or you could just make a separate motion and add, you know, make sure there's something on the website. You know, was it top secret to buy a meter in Wooddale?
No, I mean, certainly we, we would be, be amenable to, to pull back the curtain on the meter prices, you know, and just update the table, table once a year, twice a year, whatever, whatever the council sees fit. That, that's fine.
Fine, I'll, I'll amend my motion. Does the second agree?
That's Peter, Peter.
Question. But, but then aren't you having to redo the ordinance and going through legal and the class of it? Are you saying that you're going to update the website with our latest class?
Yeah, this would be one, and I know the attorney won't like, like this answer, but once we do it once, we'll have the templates. We can just update the numbers in it and just represent. We're not going to have to run it through legal, legal every time to, to get it back on the docket, so.
Okay.
See, yeah, what, what, once we do it the first time, it would just, it'd just be a repetitive motion at that point.
Okay.
Two questions, going to change the motion again, is it?
Well, I got a question. All right. Brad, basically, so what are you going to put on the website? The price, the price, the price plus twenty dollars or thirty dollars and then the ten percent administrative fee? Or are you just putting the straight up cost?
In, in the, the table, we'd put the current price of the meter and then we'd add another.
Ten percent.
Section C or we'd move C down or whatever and say the above table, you know, plus ten, however legal wants to order. But we put the current price, then we would put a note in regarding the, the ten percent fee.
Something our current cost plus.
Or, or we can put the price plus the ten percent in there and then footnote the table that it's the meter plus the. Well, the, the.
Well, we have a website.
The, the city code website's always up right to, yeah, so. So we'll have to see what legal recommends the best way to, to represent the table is, but it'll, it'll be right.
It'll have the automatic increases in there of our cost. Once. If we're paying a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And we get a twenty dollar increase, it's automatic. You don't have to come back to the council and say, hey, we got a twenty dollar increase. We've got to change the ordinance. It's automatic.
No, we would.
But you have a template. You make the change.
Yeah, but we have the, yeah, yeah, we have the template to change it, so we'll just change it and, and bring it back.
If the motion would be to just, the cost of the meter plus the administrative fee, the cost changes. And you said it yourself, twice or once a year. Doesn't have to be another discussion.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. I thought the motion originally passed to just put the cost plus the ten percent in the code hindering, or not needing to update the code in the future because it updates automatically. The, the second motion was to just make sure that we update the website with the costs every year or two.
You can't have two motions. You got to have one and put, make an amendment of a motion. You can't have two motions on the floor.
Direction to staff to put that on the website, then.
Yeah, I don't, I, we're all hung up on the website right now. I'm not, I'm not quite sure why, but my concept was to keep the schedule that you have there. Update the pricing in there and compensate for a couple of years. The, the prices don't go up that much. So that you only have to adjust that schedule every couple of years, maybe, maybe three years. I mean, if the, if the meter costs us, you know, ninety-eight dollars and sixty-two cents, we're not making it ninety-eight dollars and sixty-two cents, right?
No, that's what they're doing.
Well, that's what they were doing, what I'm saying. So we know that over the years, they've gone up twenty percent. Add the twenty percent, you know you're good, plus your costs for three years.
Who's on first?
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second.
All right. So a roll call there?
What's your, what's the motion?
What's the motion?
No, no, the, the original motion.
Original motion.
The original motion or they corrected?
Correct motion.
We, we amended the motion.
You amended it to have something on the website.
Yeah, that was just.
Right, but the table, that's where we're getting hung up on, the website. The table's part of our code, so the table's getting updated. All our building and zoning codes are on our website under sterling codifiers and are always there and functioning. So our motion's just to amend the code section, right? It will go on, ultimately wind up on a website, but has nothing, the motion has nothing to do with the website. Correct.
Yeah, my interpretation of the revised motion was to keep the table that's in the code and update that once, once a year, twice a year, whatever it was, within the city code.
Correct.
So it's update the pricing, add the administrative fee, but then maintain currency on a yearly basis with the table within the city code, which is linked to through our website.
Do you still want a roll call?
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalana? Alderman Sizmersky?
Can you repeat the middle part? Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Report and recommendation for special service area twelve, thirteen, and fourteen bond refinancing. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This states in the memo, you know, back in oh five, oh six, you know, staff, as interest rates started to fall, staff looked into the idea of refinancing the, the special service area bonds in order to save the property taxpayers in those three service areas, which are the industrial parks, the three industrial parks of the city, some money. At that time, due to the call date on the bonds, as well as some negative arbitrage earnings and other exciting financial factors, it wasn't, wasn't feasible at that time. Staff looked into it again last summer and again, it wasn't feasible. Recently, Spear Financial, who's the city's financial advisor on bond issues, reached out and said, due to the closeness to the call date, as well as the prolonged near-zero interest rates, we're now in a position where we can refinance those bonds favorably for the city. The estimated savings reach of the areas is around five percent over the next ten years for the life of the bonds. And going into the Elton O'Hare-Thorndale conversion, the corridor, you know, trying to make those properties as marketable as possible, lowering the property tax bills will only help to enhance the marketability of those properties going forward. So since this has been kind of a brewing issue for a number of years and we're now in a favorable position, staff thought it best to come forward, best counsel for them to move ahead with refinancing the bonds, lower the business owners' tax bills and make the properties more marketable.
Question. Thank you. So I, first I just want to confirm that we're not adding more time onto the length of the financing, therefore paying more interest. Okay, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then I make that motion.
Second.
Isn't, none of this area is what we're going to tiff, is it?
Part of it is, yes.
So then my question on that, if we go ahead and do that, if we tiff that, how's that going to throw this off?
It won't.
It won't throw it off at all?
Say the motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Your report and recommendation for purchasing and updating P cards?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the items in the strategic plan, and it had been talked about on a number of occasions on the dais, was purchasing, consolidating purchasing, streamlining some purchasing. The first page, page and a half of the memo talks about what we've done so far with that since the beginning of the fiscal year. We actually had a conversation earlier today regarding the washroom supplies, getting that agreement contract buttoned up. And one of the next things in addition to the miscellaneous and small parts, you know, the parts bins, nuts, bolts, and washers, was really changing how the day-to-day activities of the guys purchase items. Because currently, as you see in the analysis, we use the invoice method where they go buy something and then hopefully they bring the invoice back or the vendor mails us the invoice. And so sometimes it can be two days, a week before we get the invoice. In finance, we have to stamp it, send it to the department. It's going to be sometimes a week, sometimes in theory before the different departments get the invoice, know what the guys have bought, code it, send it back, things of that nature. And one of the questions I get every year near the end of the fiscal year, right at the beginning of the fiscal year is, you know, how much, how many bills are still out there? How much do we owe to people? And we have no way of answering that to all the invoices floating out there in the ether. The P card system, you know, allows the guys, they go to the store, they use their card, and then in lifetime, where at, at worst case, the next day, it shows up online, whose card it was, what they purchased, you know, the amount. And then it's just one monthly bill that we pay to the, the P card vendor. So you're going to go from, you know, in some, some list of bills, we had a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty checks. You know, we figure you can probably easily get rid of anywhere between twenty and forty percent, kind of right off the bat of those vendors. So there's going to be a better accountability because we're going to see the next day what everybody's buying. We're going to streamline the invoicing process to the list of bills by cutting the number of vendors down, less checks. So we're saving time on check prep, postage, other paper goods, and then staff time as well from having to stamp, sign, and code. You know, sometimes the invoices are, you know, three or four inches thick. It's going to significantly cut that down, make the purchasing process a lot more streamlined, instead of higher accountability for everybody. And we feel overall it'd be a better system for the city to further refine our, our purchasing.
Make the motion to, to go with the purchasing, updating P cards?
Second.
Who's going to have access to these P cards? It's still the department heads?
Well, define access.
Well, who's, who's, who's going to carry these P cards?
You know, we haven't fully revised the list yet. However, I'm not going to say obviously, but the, the police officers wouldn't have them. But certainly anybody that currently does purchasing for the city on a daily basis, i.e. the public works employees, would all have one, and then department heads. Some departments like, you know, finance, for example, I would probably just have the only one. But this is largely the guys that are in the field, making purchases on a regular basis, program to streamline everything.
Here, here's a, here's a problem I see with this program. I see I'm going to have all these P cards out there to go and do this. When you have one person that loses a P card, we got a problem. Okay, that means anyone can pick up that P card, Joe Smoke, go up there and run a bill out and buy stuff for their homes. So it's like a credit card. You lose a credit card, doesn't matter.
Now they need to show their identification.
It doesn't say that in here.
That's how P cards work.
No.
You have to be authorized to use it.
It's like a credit card, so.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, you know, if, if they were to lose their card, one of the business rules that would be in place is to immediately notify their supervisor. They would immediately notify an authorized user, would go shut that card off immediately. The second thing is, especially for the public works guys, their cards are only going to work at hardware stores, maybe a gas station. You know, they're not going to be able to go to Best Buy or H. H. Greg or anything like that and buy the, you know, the big, you know, Samsung curved TVs and things like that, so.
And my follow-up question on that is, so what you're doing is you're eliminating us as a council unless we ask for the P card printout of what was spent at the hardware stores or whatever. Correct me if I'm wrong here, because I want to make sure I'm right here or, or I'm wrong. So you're just, you're going to eliminate more checks. But that eliminates me perfectly asking a question on, on the list of bills of something we purchased, maybe double purchase it or it gets on the bill twice and you're just going to pay the bill without seeing it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, most of it was supposed to be for the personnel buying uniforms, maher, and purchasing tools from smaller pottery tools for public works?
Yeah, it'd, yeah, it'd be for really anything the public works guys would buy, from the uniforms to the tools, hoses, tires, things like that. You know, to your question, I mean, the, the, the system will allow you to run a report by cardholder or by store. There's, there's a bunch of different ways to run the reports, so we can see what's being bought at each store. That's certainly available, you know, really at any time.
It's for Sam's card too, though, if you use a P card at Sam's, to buy office supplies.
No, the Sam's Club cards, you have to buy it on the direct account. You can't use, you have to use your Sam's Club card.
Anyone can do office supplies like this to, on a P card?
I mean, we purchase all the office supplies through one vendor currently. So I mean, if they'll take the P card to get away from the invoicing process. So I mean, if they'll take the P card to get away from the invoicing process, it'd probably be something we'd look to do.
Peter?
I just have a few questions. It it talks about that someone's going to have a chance to review this P card daily, the transaction. So who is that person going to be? Each department head or you or someone in your department?
Sure, we would have to designate the authorized users in each department and then they would be able to go in. So, yeah, it would be the department heads and or assistant directors that would have access to view, you know, their employees' cards, you know, like we don't necessarily want somebody from the building department looking at what the police department's buying or, you know, something to that nature. So we would, we'd give the appropriate people access to what they need to view.
Follow-up, how much time is it going to take a department head on average? I mean, I'm not sure how many purchases they're going to make a day in their departments, but.
The idea is since it will all be, you know, printed out on a computer screen, is is no more than it takes them currently. The goal is to to make that process shorter for them, but certainly it would be no longer than they already spend on a daily or weekly basis going through their block of invoices.
Thank you. It, this certainly seems much more efficient and streamlined than we do it now, so I look at it as a positive. But I do believe that, call it like one of the vendors and maybe all purchases, all line items over twenty five dollars are on the list of bills underneath that vendor for each of them. It doesn't have to be by purchaser, but it it is good that we're still seeing some level of detail like we see today. You know, like some type of accountability.
Yeah, Brad, what is the cost? Is this like a credit card where they're getting, you know, one percent, two percent per transaction? And is there a transaction fee? Is there a contract that we have to sign and how long is that contract?
There are no fees at the current time in the current proposal that we have. In fact, and I think it was one of the FAQs, if we reach certain spending thresholds, we actually get money back. Actually get a rebate, we get a check if we spend enough money once a year. And if I can digress for half a second to Alderman Winger and Alderman Wesley's question, you know, I mean, that report that we can produce, if there's a comfort level early on to produce that report and include it, you know, with the list of bills for the first few times, just to kind of see what the data looks like. We can, we can, we can work with that and and include that for a level of comfort for everybody.
And does this directly feed into our accounting system or is this a standalone system? So we're going to eliminate all the data processing?
My understanding is that our current software does not allow for a data upload. The new version does, however, but it theoretically, if the system accepted it, yes, it would just feed directly into the system. We are going to work with Springbrook, though, to see if the version we're on will take it, just not aware of which button it is. But conceptually speaking, yes, it would just upload and eliminate any of the the data key issues.
If presently it's not capable of that, somebody would have to look at one screen and physically then enter all that data into our system without that link or module or upgrade or formula or whatever it is.
Correct.
So how soon to get it so it will do it automatically and what does that cost, do we know?
Those are both great questions and I I don't know the answer to either one of those, largely because I didn't want to, you know, go down there, because our quotes have timeouts on them. And so, you know, before having this conversation, I want to.
That's fine, thank you. Yeah, I was just going to say, Brad, you you kind of answered my question. I'd feel better about voting yes for this as long as we can have a breakdown on the P cards as far as purchases.
In regards to what Alderman Wesley had asked earlier, if someone were to lose their card, like on your credit card, usually the owner has some kind of security, you're only responsible for the first fifty dollars or something. Is there something with the P card similar?
There is, not having the contract information, I don't remember the the exact amount, but it's at least a six-figure protection. I recall off the top, it might even be a million dollars, but there is a significant protection on it for us, yeah.
Brad, the reason we're doing this is to streamline, but a second ago you mentioned that our public works guys can go in and still go buy five bolts and ten screws and that's still, we're still taking them off the street. Part of this whole process was get this so that we're not, we don't have as much downtime with the, with them, with our employees. Right, that was one of the issues, brought this up. The other one, you said, well, they can't go to H. H. Greg, but you know what, somebody can really outfit their garage with a lot of power tools. Do we have a credit limit on this card or is it ten grand or is it fifty dollars?
Sure, the cards can each have their own individual limit, a daily limit, weekly limit, monthly limit. So yes, they can't go completely.
Do we set a limit?
What's that?
Did we set a limit or we're just talking about it right now?
Well, when we come up with the business rules for all the cards will be handled internally, then we'll be setting those limits. And even right now, the the department head credit cards, the department heads have different, different levels.
Depending on the usage, right.
Usage and things of that nature. So, yeah, certainly, you know, the 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 usual have different limits based on their buying habits, what position they're in within the organization and what their expected spend should be. You know, if they've had one or two purchases over the last two years, we're not going to give them a ten thousand dollar limit. You know, and then to your other point with the the nuts and bolts and whatnot.
Right, the streamline, I I know we're working on that, but.
Yeah, and one of the things is.
Sounds like same practice, just different way of invoicing.
Well, different way of invoicing, true. But one of the things that this will do is it'll give us all of the purchases from that vendor in one screen that we can sort by cost. And so we can, on a monthly basis, you know, it's going to be a lot easier for us to go through and identify the low-cost repetitive buys than going through a foreign stack of invoices. So the the sort capabilities in that will help us to identify those. And we're already talking to a couple of vendors about parts containers to get out of the the two or three nuts and bolts as well. So that that conversation's already underway and then this will help us pick those up a lot sooner in the process as well.
Yeah, I was going to just, because that was my concern also, was everybody running around. But in prior positions, I've had the ability to have that data and that will, because now you have the employee, the timeframe, the vendor, the the product, so that should help pare down and find out, because it'll be more consistent data, that you're buying fifty, you know, half inch by whatever, three inch plated bolts five times a week, you know, or oil or nails or paint or whatever. So I think this is probably one of those incremental steps we need to take to ultimately improve the system.
Motion in a second, was there?
Yeah, you made the motion, Peter second.
Aye.
Passes. Items for future recommend, uh, future meetings. City code update in September eleventh, TIF in the fall, water rates in the fall. And you wanted to add entire city discount?
Right, the water program.
Water program?
Well, it's part of, all part of the water rate.
Yeah.
Part of the water rate.
That's all, that's all water discussion.
Okay, as long as it's going to be discussed.
We'll just have it added underneath the water rate. Anything else? You know, motion for adjournment?
Second.
Opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, adjourned.